Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on inappropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely The Home News, Japan. Please stand before the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to be just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing in a moment as silence and prayer for all those suffering around the world and special prayer for all those protecting us. Thank you.
Move your attention next second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes. Right of course, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Council President, the correspondents have been forwarded to the proper departments for further action.
The only comments I have this evening are that I'm still looking into the order of succession. If the mayor is not available, but there are certain nuances that go along with that, and when I have more details, I will share that with everyone. We have no public hearings this evening. We have ordinances on second reading, and I'm going to ask for a motion to table the first one.
So.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20 Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Add 137 Remsen Avenue, 95 South Ward Street. At this time, we'll open this up to the public. If you have any comments, please step forward and state your name. You have one time up for five minutes. Seeing none.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the city of New Brunswick and Jersey Avenue NB Urban Renewal LLC for 100 Jersey Avenue Redevelopment Project, Lot 242, Lot 1, 2.06, 2.02, 5.06. At this time, I'm prepared to open it up to the public. Please step forward, state your name. You have five minutes, one time up relative to this ordinance only.
Good evening, Council President of the Council, Charles Prattville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Wanted to ask, what is the impact to the taxpayers of giving this significant discount to the developer?
The impact is a positive impact as well. It will be receiving more money than we did without the pilot and without the development, and it also sets up for long-term stability in the economic sense. So we have it, we are going to be collecting approximately four times what we were now.
Sure, but if the development was built and paid traditional property taxes, the city would bring in more revenue, no?
Sure, and that hypothetical they would, but you can also look at the hypothetical where the pilot was not granted. There would be no development, and we would be at a stagnant rate of growth and the ratables would not increase the way they will after this pilot comes to fruition.
Yeah, have you looked at that hypothetical? What the difference is between what the developer will be paying and what they could be paying if they paid full taxes?
Well, when they are paying full taxes, it will go and give me a lot more money. And you have, you know, some other instances where, like some figures that showed four that did come to fruition in the past five years that were now collecting much larger sum of money. I don't know, I can't draw up the hypothetical and give you the figures that you want because I would not know what the values of anything were.
You're correct that the property can't be assessed until it's built, but you can make an educated guess at what it will be valued at. And I know that the prior planning director was kind enough to do that when these agreements would come up, and he would tell me approximately how much he felt it might be valued at.
Mr. Dominguez, do you have an approximation on that? Or do you wish to make an approximation on what it may be?
I would prefer not to. I don't have that expertise, but I actually may have had to understand what the assessed value of the property would be at the time of completion. So I would, any number I come up with at this moment off top of my head would be, I think, hopefully under... My data would be incorrect, so I don't want to, I don't want to state it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, well, we do know the total cost of the project. The prediction for that is, correct me if I'm wrong, $202 million, right?
Okay.
Okay, so what would the full taxes be if a property of that value were taxed?
The cost of the property may not relate to what the value is when it's completed. I don't think, we cannot give you those figures right now.
Okay, well, suffice to say the developer's getting a discount versus what they would pay if they paid full property taxes. You're exempting them from the property taxes for 30 years. And I just was curious if you'd given any, you know, done any research into the level of how big of a tax break you're given?
I don't know the level of the percentage, and quite frankly, I'm not sure that I could answer that question if I did based on what you're telling me. I think that essentially this is a temporary stay, not stay, but a temporary reduction in the taxes. And my position is that it will wholly benefit the community. We're getting more housing units out of there. We're getting upgrades with the water mains here. We have affordable housing going into this project. We have jobs that will be created, so overall, the community benefits from this. In the long term, the BOE will be getting more money from this with a new ratable that's higher on the property, and I think it's beneficial to them.
And when will the BOE be collecting on the improvements?
When the pilot expires.
And that'll be what year?
Well, it's a 30-year pilot that we're looking to approve here, and I don't know when the beginning date will be. So if it's 2022 now, say it's approved and the agreement is signed today, 30 years on that will be 52.
All right, so the children in the class of 2070 might start to see some benefit?
And it's good to plan for the future in these instances. We always have to be mindful of not only current situations, but the future as well.
Okay, and in association with this, the developer does have to file audit and financial statements. What day are those statements due?
That I'm not sure. Mr. Dominguez, do you have a date for that?
I oversee them, so I don't know when those statements.
Perhaps Mr. Mulroney would be able to enlighten us?
Maybe we should send a letter out in the beginning of the year for the audit financials. Depending upon when the audit is complete for that particular entity, they usually come in staggered from now.
Thank you.
So there's no due date?
Just give you an answer.
Okay, well, I have done some Oprah requests on this and discovered that at least one tax exempt developer didn't file until after I filed my Oprah request. So I'm concerned that these documents aren't being audited, and developers are getting whatever they want. Would encourage you to hold this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prattville. Next.
Yes, Daniel Moore. I did hear most of my information that I needed, but my thing is due to where I stay with you city council members, as Mr. Prattville just said, if you don't know all the information written, what's going to be the taxes or whatever, I really say, due to where, you shouldn't be judging, keep saying yes to everything, due to where, what come down the road, then you add something else, you change it more than in. Now, a lot of this has been going on, where you change it, like in a way sneak something else in, due to where, wow, honestly, there's just no more trust in our city council members or with the mayor, due to where it's just all about money going into you all, all of your pockets. And like I said, where... What?
Excuse me.
I said, due to where money going into council members pockets.
That's a very serious allegation you're making.
I'll prove to that.
It's a very serious allegation you're making.
I am going to...
Okay, okay, you got me, Mr. Anderson. That's one thing I can't prove. Normally, I do prove myself, but okay, that is freedom of speech, due to where, what your entitled, make your speech of certain things, so am I. There's like, we hear plenty of lies from what, what?
Pretty about the...
Other ones, but okay. My comment related to this, even though this is the building that was next to the Puerto Rican Action Board?
Yes.
Now, can you please tell me, have the rest of the residents been warned that all of Jersey Avenue is going to be knocked down?
Ms. Moore, this is for the tax exemption only, not for any site plans. So if you have any questions related to this tax exemption...
Well, like I said, I've seen those people being put out in only a 30-day notice, and due to where this went through May 5th of 2021. Like I said, the city council and the mayor is doing a very horrible job, and like I said, it's all about money, sad.
I just want to make it very clear, the council is not trying to sneak anything in. There is certain information that we don't have at the time when these are initiated upon approval, and we cannot possibly calculate future rates in 20 years. We're not trying to hide anything. We do what we can with the information we have, and all the information we need is available to us to make this decision right now. Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Brendan Kaplan. I've lived in New Brunswick for the better part of 20 years. I find it quite instructive, the rhetoric taking place this evening. Very, very interesting going on. People who are looking to collect taxpayer dollars are dealing in hypotheticals with the city council, making accusations to the city council that they are taking money out of the public still. I think it's very, very unfortunate that the rhetoric we see coming out of Washington, out of Donald Trump's mouth from the right, has now found a home in New Brunswick on the left, when people who sit there and laugh and smile and try to take city money and try to take taxpayer money by besmirching the character of our elected representatives. And I've lived in this city for long enough, and I've watched it go on long enough. I'm not going to remain silent about it anymore. So I look forward to this campaign. I look forward to all of this information coming out. I look forward to the truth about the state of politics in New Brunswick coming up.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this? Seeing none.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
And Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes. Now we have resolution of...
How you first, say that first.
I'm sorry, I'm all screwed up. Ordinances on first reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10.12.160, Schedule 18, Right Turn on Red Light Prohibited, for Paul Robeson of Boulevard.
Move the ordinance, set it down September 21st, 2022, at 5:30, same day to the other times.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes. Now we have resolutions. You can please step forward if you have any comments to make. You have one time up, five minutes only, on the resolutions only.
Good evening, once again, Charles Prattville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Like to ask about number five. Appears to be a reassignment of one of these long-term tax exemptions from one entity to another. Can you tell me, does this mean that the owners of, I guess it's the George, sold it? Is that true?
I know there's a new formation agreement that has actually changed ownership, yes?
Yes, Council President, this is a sale from the current entity to itself in two new entities. So basically, borrowing up in ownership. This is an assignment of the existing client.
Thank you, and I do know all the formation agreements were assigned by the state.
Thank you, and who are the two new entities getting involved in this tax exempt property?
It says Arcade George Urban Renewal Associates and LRFI George Urban Renewal Associates LLC.
Anybody know who the principals are of those corporations or...
I don't have that information.
No, nobody knows? Anybody know the sale price?
I don't have that.
Nope, okay. Okay, move on to number 14 and 15 are both transportation improvements. Lewis Cortlandt Street and then Van Dyke Avenue. Can somebody tell me what is going to change there, what's being included?
Mr. Valenti, please.
Yes, these are, these are both through the New Jersey Department of Transportation's funding for municipalities specific to the, I'm sorry, here we go, specific to... Cortlandt Street is a urban local aid slash urban aid, which is your traditional, what we see every year. And the Van Dyke Avenue actually also is another urban aid program. They're making, I believe it's urban aid. There's several categories which we've been awarded through DOT. One is, there's a freight impact fund that you can get funds from. So, I mean, you can do, but these are both New Jersey DOT local and urban aid. This will hopefully apply for every year.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, the ARPA funding, number 20. Is it true that the city has not spent any of the American Rescue Plan money it's received, nor has it spent any of the CARES Act money it's received? And if so, why? What's the holdup?
I don't know the specifics to that, but if you'd like any information relative to this particular line item, I can ask Mr. Jules to give an explanation.
Sure. So the city has plans to use that money to advance our water utility and sewer infrastructure. Part of that will be used for the underground infrastructure under Fisher Park, about $386,000. And then we are embarking on a very large water treatment plant upgrade project. The procurement of that has begun, the construction that will be in next year. And those funds will be used a large part for that.
Thank you, Mr. Jules.
And just to be clear, none of the CARES Act money was spent, none of the ARPA money was spent?
The CARES Act money was spent well over a year ago. I'd have to look back, I'm sorry about the call.
Okay, well, the response to a recent Oprah request indicates differently, so I'll follow up. Number 22, a new judge for New Brunswick. Can you speak to this person and their qualifications?
I don't know her personally. I'm relying on the word of the mayor of this appointment. Does anybody else have any?
Her resume looks very good.
Yes.
What does it include? What are those qualifications?
I don't have her resume, frankly, Mr. Prattville. I can get that too if you'd like.
Great, I'd like to see it. I know you say you're relying on the word of the mayor.
Is that something that can be shared, Mr. Shami?
You have to be exact, because probably we have her formal dress on it. But just home dresses are not allowed to be sent to...
Should it be something that's...
The dynamics, yeah. Right. From what I know about her, she also sits in other municipalities. She's a woman, she's bilingual in Spanish, she's a lawyer in private practice as well, a former prosecutor as well.
So it doesn't seem that I'm going to be able to share her resume, but hypothetically, Mr. Shami.
I'll request it, and I'll get the redacted version. Finally, number 40, architectural and engineering services for renovating this room finally after so many years. What's going on here? What's the plan?
We are getting plans to increase the size of the dais up here. As you know, we have two new council members coming on board. This no longer suits the needs for that, so we are getting plans from an architect, and these are covered by speaking with engineering teams. Next, please.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore. I would have to go back to number 20, due to where I just heard, actually, the actual number, close to $300,000 going towards Pittman Park or Feaster's Park?
Yes.
What seems to be the issue, due to where it's been over $3.5 million already that was approved for Pittman Park and Feaster's Park? So please tell me, what is the situation where now you need three, over $300,000 more?
It's not, if I...
Yes, please.
It's not over $300,000 more. It's a funding mechanism to meet that financial goal to fund the park.
Ms. Moore, I don't know if you understand, this is grant funding that is being used. This is not money that we're being, that's being pulled from the budget from other areas, but...
That's what I'm trying, thank you. I'm glad you said that, thank you. This is something where, right, due to where it can go to plenty of other things, but I'm still trying to understand, due to where, when you provided the ordinance for the Pittman Park and Feaster's Park, you showed the price, how much it was for the workers, you showed the price for the material and all.
Right, with that, with that specification of getting funding down the road, we didn't have at the time, so we cannot be imposed on the budget at that particular time until we get the funding.
Wow, the time that that went through, with the new budget coming through, I still don't see how, like I said, this money can be used for something else. And it's for the park, even though I do thank Mr. Valenti for explaining the difference, what's going on with this park, due to where we've been discussing it for a while, due to where we have the water backing up and causing an issue over there. So I do understand, but like I said, due to where I'm just still upset to see where, wow, this money can go towards somewhere else in another type of emergency, due to where... That's why I'm saying, I said the city council really needs to stop voting yes on things until you have the full actual amount of something. And that's the main reason why I say that, because, wow, that could have surely went towards, just towards something else to be the helping hand, instead of just the park, even though we appreciate the good part. Then the other one, let me see, I did have one more. Okay, and then I would just like to speak once again, number nine, where with Far Far's with Boyd Park, please, due to where, like I said last time, due to where Chuck O'Donnell wrote a story saying, I'm bad mouthed. He didn't put my name in it, but believe me, I'm bad-mouthing bad about the Rattleton River. Please tell me, have any of you been down to that river to see how it stinks down there? Due to where what, you can't even walk through the boardwalk with nothing being cut? Please, have any of you been down there, instead of saying that, ooh, I'm bad-nosed, bad-mouthing? Honestly, I'll bring you the pictures, due to where the maintenance, it's not being cleaned, how it stinks down there, it's so much garbage down there, and for, like, wow, you're trying to keep inviting people down there. And like I said, too many people haven't been coming. The events haven't even been that big. Like I said, blessed that you're doing it, but due to, until you, someone takes the responsibility in cleaning up down there, where I tell you, I pass through there every other day. If anything, I would have had the pictures in time, but due to where I'm still shaking over witnessing someone getting hit by a car earlier, I'm 27, but yes, due to where, please, take the time to go walk through there, and due to where what? I didn't want to say nothing about what, I told you how dangerous it is, whether it was related to the man drowning down here or what. You can't see the border, it's a jungle down there. Too much garbage down there, you're short on staff, the garbage isn't being picked up. I was just down there, what, the day before yesterday? What do you keep inviting people, saying like, wow, like this is a good park, until you go investigate it? Do I really have to print up the picture to bring them here to show you how nasty it is down there? Do I? Please, take the time to go see for yourself, or like I said, if not, I will bring the pictures back to show the public or put them up on Facebook, due to where, come on, you need more workers. I'm not saying nothing against the workers, but they need more help. You're using them too much, too much for other things, that's not even their part, which I will get to when I do speak on the public comment, due to where, what the Parks Department, ooh, what are they doing cleaning up the post office? But all right, please do, go take a look down there.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else in the public wish to speak? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes. Before I open it up to my fellow councilmates, I just want to thank Devco and Jengoli for the Competitive Edge Partnership Leaders and Training Program. They graduated 40 students in the last class, which is up from 20 in the previous year. The program introduces civic-oriented projects for leadership roles, teaching students with hands-on learning activities in an effort to develop their skills, focusing on wellness, environmental, emotional, intellectual, physical, occupational, finance, social, and spiritual aspects. I also want to congratulate Council Vice President Escobar for her role through Yap on implementing the program with the students. And last but not least, I want to congratulate the children who graduated from this program and worked so hard, and I wish them well, and maybe we'll see them as future leaders in our city. Council Vice President Escobar, do you have any comments you'd like to make this evening?
No, just to say thank you to, this past weekend was the, you know, there was an activity at Rossova School, in our Rossova School for the students. Captain Boladilla from the Police Department, in New Brunswick, performing art center and others. They did an excellent event, I was there, I volunteered, and they gave out over 900 book bags to the kids in the community, and also even tables of information and stuff for the students and the parents, so thank you for that, for doing, working as a community. Like I always say, it takes all of us to take care of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Anderson, you have any comments you'd like to make this evening?
Just a reminder of, obviously, that school is open again. Young people are walking, so be very careful. Also, we have school buses, so when those red lights are on, and please do not pass the school buses, and be careful of those kind of things, because sometimes kids do run out in the street.
Councilman Egan? Councilman Fleming?
Just want to echo what Councilman Anderson said, just said, wish everybody a happy and safe school year, especially a safe school year. Enter my 28th year in the classroom, two more years away from retirement, praise God. And, and things have changed in those years. Like, kids used to just worry about going to school before. Now they got to worry about if it's going to be safe, and parents are worried about whether or not their kids are coming home. So this, I still, like I tell my students, the school be built up, the village in, and if you see something, say something. I never thought I would have to say something like that in school, and the school will build it, but we do. But this is our second year back from craziness, from 2020 when schools shut down, and kids are still adjusting to being in a classroom, a social setting like that. And we've seen it over the years where, like last year, there was a lot of antisocial behaviors, because kids hadn't been around each other a long time. We had a lot of fights, a lot of arguments and stuff like that. This year, we're starting to get back to semi-normal. Hopefully, perfectly, we get back to that. So there's hope that everybody has, we won't have to look on the news and see something happen that's unfortunate.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. I'll now open it up for public comment. You have one time up, five minutes. Please state your name again for the record. And I'm just, everybody be mindful, this is not a question-answer session, it's a public comment session. Thank you.
Brendan Kaplan, resident of the city of New Brunswick. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to note the state of the country and how I think that relates to the state of the city of New Brunswick. In the country, we have some movements going on where alt-members of the Republican Party are seeking to dismantle democracy, and I think we need to take that very, very seriously. I think we need to take it very seriously at home, too. So what do I mean by that? Is this just a policy that I don't like? Is this, oh, I don't like their tax policy, so I'm going to say that they're alt-members of some party? I don't think it's about policy. I think it's about willingness to bend norms, to break rules, to whip up mobs, to commit violence, to encourage folks to go after political opponents, to bring politics into people's personal lives and prevent them from having the quiet enjoyment of their own life. I think that's very dangerous to democracy. And I'll note that when I came to New Brunswick, 18, almost 19 years ago at this point, there was a lot of energy, actually, on the right. There were some Republicans who were concerned about the big bailouts for banks, who were concerned about endless wars, about the police state, but they ignored the racism and other problematic behaviors on the right. And over the years, I saw what could have been something very exciting for this country transformed into the Tea Party, and then finally, the party of Donald Trump. And I'm here to encourage everybody in New Brunswick, city council members, residents, people watching this video, don't let that happen to you on the left. Don't ignore the problematic behaviors of people who purport to be your leaders, who haven't had real jobs, who've never had to live in the real world, who seek media attention, who are present in the spotlight, in the limelight, whenever they get the chance, who enjoy engaging in violent rhetoric, in hateful debate, and in making you on the city council feel uncomfortable, asking you hypothetical questions to which there are no factual answers, and asking it in some tone of voice, where if you're not able to hop from the right foot to the left foot in the exact right way, that you're somehow corrupt and you're somehow evil. So I'm warning everybody in New Brunswick, everybody on the left, don't fall for it, or you will see the leaders who try to do it, take your movement where Donald Trump has taken the right. We're better than this, we deserve better than this. It's in our hands as members of this city, as Americans, as voters. So I encourage everybody, think. Now again, I'm going to put us back to policy, right? Now again, I'm gonna put us back to policy, right? It's not about that, it's not about policy, it's about the way people live their lives, it's about the way people conduct themselves. Otherwise, if you just don't like somebody's policy, oh, I don't like the tax abatement that you're putting up, I don't like the payment in lieu of taxes that you're talking about, which by the way, raises the ratables, which I'm understanding, by four X, but we could go back and forth on that debate, maybe it's a good point, maybe it's a bad point, that's a complicated nuanced issue. That's what these people do, they create complicated nuanced issues, they exploit the debate, and then they hope to paint their adversaries as evil. I'm an executive leader in my job, and I have four simple rules for how I run my team. Number one, we start meetings on time, number two, we end meetings on time, number three, we only talk about the agenda for that meeting, and number four, the leaders on my team who I have empowered to run different sections of the team, we follow their expertise, we listen to those experts. If we don't like the experts, we get rid of them and we bring in somebody else. But if you don't follow those four simple rules, if you try to micromanage every team, whether you're a member of the public, a stakeholder, or whether you're a leader of the team, even if you're in charge of the team, the micromanagement only leads to poor outcomes and performance of the team, and I've learned this over my years, working my way up, becoming a successful leader in my business practice. So anytime you see somebody doing that, it should give you pause. And anytime you see somebody doing that, who's seeking to get money out of it, it should give you pause. And anytime you see somebody doing that, seeking to get money out of it, going on things like Infowars, Donald Trump building his own media ecosystem so that he doesn't have to be accountable, it should give you pause. Thank you, city council, I was encouraged by what I saw this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. I'll have the next speaker, please, please state your names and give us your address for the record.
Hello, my name's Paul McLean, I live at two twenty-five Hale Street here in New Brunswick, and I have, I guess, two issues.
I'm sorry.
One is an ongoing problem.
Excuse me?
I don't know, there's some outside conversation.
You have an issue? You have an issue? What are you talking about?
Oh, there's someone trying to start shit against me, saying that I'm doing something.
Do we need help there, or?
I don't know. I don't think so.
I guess, what, one of your partners did what, think I'm saying, like I was threatening you? What the hell, what, does he come at me again? What, one of your partners? Huh?
I don't know what you're talking, I'm from here, what are you, what are you talking about?
What are you talking about?
Okay, that's enough of this here, Ms. Moore, please refrain from making comments.
I used to say shit to this man, what are you coming at me for?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
What are you coming at me for?
You're under order, I will not take the cursing in this room, or the yelling in this room. Please sit down, I'll give you an opportunity to come back up, you can remain in the room, please sit down for now.
I'm, 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 I'm just, I'm just.
Ms. Moore, I'm giving you an opportunity, I'm not gonna give you another one. I'm sorry, Mr. McLean, please go forward, you're seated.
Thank you, a couple of things, one is, I've been here a couple of times before, a couple of years ago, about flooding on Hale Street, there's a very old conduit that runs under my property between Hale and Baldwin, it floods often, I brought four pictures from four different time periods over the last couple of years, showing the flooding, something that's severe enough that it runs reversed down my driveway to my garage, and it's a problem for my neighbors as well, and for the Baptist church at the corner of Hale and Livingston. So one of my neighbors spoke to the mayor's office, and allegedly, the mayor said that this is gonna be taken care of, that we're gonna reroute this, that there, that it was never, the sewer line was a tie-in from the school further up Livingston, and that this was improperly done. That's been an allegation in the past, I don't, I don't know if it's true, but I've heard it from different sources. And that some, soon enough, this was gonna be changed, there'd be rerouting to Lee Street or Livingston. I just want to make a point again, it's a severe problem, it adversely affects a number of properties in the neighborhood, it adversely affects the church across the street, and I'm happy to leave these pictures with you guys to take a look. So that's one thing, okay? The other thing is a question, and it's, and maybe you don't want to address it now, and I should already know, but I walk, I used to walk through Feaster Park every day to my office, and now I walk around it, and I, I've not heard, this is not to blame anybody, I just have not heard, I'm ignorant of, what the plan is there, when it might be completed, what the component parts are. I was sad to see some old growth trees destroyed in the redoing of the park, so I just, if anybody can speak to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Valenti, would you like to comment on this briefly, please?
Yeah, certainly, I can comment on both occasions. Be specific to the issue with the Hale Street flooding, there are two components to that. Last year, we uncovered a hundred feet of pipe on Baldwin Street that was clogged, which has been replaced, it seems to have bated some of the issue. However, the last heavy rainstorm, the resident from two twenty-one Hale did call, at the mayor's request, I actually went into Chester Red Shaw School, which was built by the SDA about ten years ago, the entire block is fed into the pipe that Mr. McNeil was referring to. So myself and the city engineer are currently redesigning a refit, we're gonna look at two options, one is divert all the water from that block between Comstock, Delvan, Livingston, and Lee, and that'll be diverted into the Mile Run, or the Lyle Brook Storm Sewer System that's built on Remsen Avenue. The other option is to utilize the existing parking lot, of which is owned by the Board of Education in the corner of Comstock and Lee, and do what's known as a stormwater attenuation system, that'll have, there's serious calculations, you get rainfall amounts, you have enough volume to then mitigate and attenuate and minimize what's going through the pipe, so we're looking at both options. So that's, and he has been here many times, absolutely, I'm aware of the issue, we thought we got it solved when we replaced about a hundred feet of pipe on Baldwin Street, that was clogged with debris and mostly roots and whatnot, and certainly that was a contributor, but the heavy-duty, short, high-intensity, short rainfalls are, it can rain a tenth of an inch an hour for two days and will never have an issue, so when we have those two or three inch an hour rates of rainfall, that's when we have the issues. Specific to Pittman and Feaster Park, it's a complete renovation of the park, the, there's a series of new features in the park, of which required in some cases, the old growth trees have come down, we did preserve the one majestic oak, and there's, there's several hundred trees going back in. But some of the features include a water feature, there's four features of a mini-water park, we have two separate playground areas, one for five to twelve, and one for tots, there's a little mini-tot area, there's gonna be some areas where there's outdoor classrooms in Paul, you know, in the park for Paul Robeson, there's a nice meandering walk, we also reshaped the land, so you have better visibility, and you used to walk along Handy Street, you just saw the bluff, you couldn't see into the park, so now, that's all reshaped to improve the view, there's, you've probably seen the two basketball courts that are, have been relocated, and so there's a lot of nice features to that.
All right, just two, very quick comments, I just want to be clear, I don't want the water directed away from my house to flow into somebody else's, so as long as, I appreciate, I'm glad to hear there's a bigger solution. And then the Feaster Park, there's always people who are, every morning, some young man would be working out on that equipment there, doing chin-ups and pull-ups and stuff, and I just want to make sure that you know that that was used equipment, and I would love to see if that were there for the residents going forward, maybe it's not part of the plan, but perhaps a good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. I'll have the next speaker, please, please state your name, give your address for the record.
Hello, yes, I'm George Austin, I live at sixty Patterson Street Skyline Tower, I've been living there three, well, I'm going in my third year, and we have many problems in that building, and I just wanted to bring it to someone's attention here, that we have leakage problems within the windows, there's no insulation in the walls, the superintendent told me that himself, he went into my wall, and there's no insulation in there, we're paying electric bills, and we're not getting, we get a postcard, like, thing, from a third-party electric company, that states we pay this much rent, like, I live alone, I have one television, I'm one person, my bill is almost three hundred dollars a month, that's insane, and I didn't, I can't get anyone to talk to me regarding how they're calculating this, or no one has said anything, I've come, I've asked them several times, not getting anywhere, so.
You said skyline towers?
Yes.
And, you know, that is privately owned, but maybe we can do something, I can look into it to see if I can facilitate something, but it isn't, you know, a city-owned property or something, I can't give you a particular answer right now. But I, but I understand your concerns, and I will note them and look into it if I can.
I do have pictures, but I don't have them with me now, I'm gonna speak. Yes, he does.
Our speaker.
New Brunswick doesn't expect that, though, right? The city of New Brunswick, yes, which else?
Right, and that, that's the area I can, I can speak to.
And I do have pictures of the windows flooding, they corrected two of them so far, but the third window is still like a puddle of water every time, the rain's heavily, so I can submit those at a later time, because I don't have them printed out at this time, I just wanted to bring it to someone's attention.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate you for this.
For the comments, and I will speak with you.
You said you spoke to the maintenance before, or something?
Yes, maintenance is not, if I was upper management, I believe, because I'm not getting anywhere with them, even though I go to them regarding these issues, nobody's getting back to me, so that's my issue.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, I would just speak to what he was saying, due to where, like I said, with some of these inspectors, I don't think they're doing proper inspections throughout New Brunswick, and like I said, residents shouldn't have to be going through this, because I just got a phone call a little while ago, due to where I need to talk to someone, she's asking me questions, too, I get in contact with, but first, I would like to say, due to where, what just went along, due to where I know a lot of you are really coming at me, due to where you know that the public responds to me in a very good way, I've been here forty-five years, and like I said, due to where, what, you keep coming at me saying that I did something to that man, if you didn't see what happened, don't accuse me, like I said, you're frightened, I can tell it's all a frame, because we never had a police officer down here before with city council, other than when the captain is here, what you keep saying, threatening me, like I said, with everything, with New Brunswick Police Department, Chuck O'Donnell, what, coming at my son, filing charges, dropping charges, and wow, writing a false statement, saying that my nephew was arrested, telling Rutgers, like I said, what are you doing, then give me a ticket at the park, at the hour, I'm really helping a man on the ground? Please, like I said, wow, I will take a break from here, but I think it's not that you're scaring me away, it's, believe me, the Lord's not gonna be happy to see that I'm not doing what I'm told to do, and believe me, like I said, it's gonna come back all on all of you, and like I said, with you saying there's no racism in New Brunswick, forty-five years, New Brunswick Police Department is nothing but racist, and what did I say, what, is it like, what, you can do whatever the hell you want in New Brunswick, as long as you're not black? I provide evidence, racism with New Brunswick Police Department. And like I said, due to where, I will say again, please, nine-one-one, seven-four-five, fifty-two-hundred, needs to go back to New Brunswick Police Department, due to where Rutgers is not doing a good job, it's taking too much time, and believe me, I noticed the difference when I called three times last week for a police car, and then, like I said, calling for a police car, what, witnessing someone getting hit on twenty-seven by Wawa's, but luckily Sergeant Lembeling, he was right there to come over and help, due to where, like I said, do you think I really want to do this, but if this is what the Lord touched me to do, to be there for someone, I just have to accept it. But like I said, I dial seven-three-two, seven-four-five, fifty-two-twenty-six, directly to police headquarters, and for example, due to where the car accident, the people called the police, I'm like, wow, when I'm calling the police headquarters, no, we didn't get another call from nowhere? Come on, it needs to go back to New Brunswick Police Department, because it's taking too much time to get to scenes. And then I will speak, due to why I'm very upset with seeing our employees for trimming trees for homeowners on Ball Street, last year, you told me the owners will pay, that money goes to this city, but it doesn't go to the workers? What was I, where I put up a video, what do I see New Brunswick employees cleaning the post office for, where it's been dirty for two years? Why are our employees doing that? That's government property, they can, they got money, they clean their own property, please tell me what is why our New Brunswick workers working for other people for? I, I have, I have the video, they're, they're up, so please. And then you say, wow, wow, that you don't, the city, a lot of money doesn't go towards the city, why it should go towards them? And like I said, you're treating them like, the mayor's treating them like slaves. And one thing I will say, I noticed my question wasn't answered, far as regards to the two hundred thousand dollars that the county received for the homelessness, what did New Brunswick get? Did they get it yet? How much did they get? And like, and like I said, due to where, even though, like I said, too much going on, due to where, a lot of what I say doesn't matter anywhere, where you're trying to make me look like I'm the bad one, but like I said, it's all good, because like I said, the Lord knows which ones are evil, and believe me, I tell you, each one of you will have your day.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Brittany Reckhart, I live at sixty-four Skeland Drive in Highland Park, I'm a Rutgers senior, and I'm also the president of the Landscape Architecture Club. One of my agendas was on there to take over some parking spaces, and I wanted to just speak to that real quick. No one said anything, so it's approved. So we have a parking day every, every, every year, and JAS LA, American Society of Landscape Architects, the point of Parking Day is to take over some parking spaces, and just show how these spaces can be used for other things besides cars, they're supposed to be lighthearted and fun, but also have that note of environmentalism that's super hot right now. So I just wanted everybody to know, kind of spread the word if you can, that we're, this year, we're gonna be on the corner of College Avenue, Somerset Street, right across from where the Barnes and Nobles is, where the arches for the old Queens College, we're gonna be doing a little tree walk for the Queens College to show some tree species, we're gonna be doing some, they're called seed bombs, where you make your own seed bombs, and then hopefully grow some wildflowers, and a couple smaller, just kind of fun, lighthearted events to kick off the club. The last couple years of club, and Rutgers as a whole, with COVID, it's been a little bit down, we haven't had as much participation, and so we're really trying to bring that back and bring those good feelings back, so, thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Have the next speaker, please.
I'm so sorry, I have a couple programming things, do you want them?
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I'll start by saying thank you to the New Brunswick Police Department for blocking traffic and keeping us safe while we were marching as part of the rally and march for a safer New Brunswick last month, truly do appreciate them. Want to ask through you, Madam Chair, for the Vice President of the Council, are you aware that New Brunswick Housing Authority Executive Director John Clark has now taken on a third and fourth job as interim executive director at Princeton Housing Authority and Atlantic City Housing Authority, and are you okay with that, and why wasn't that done through an interlocal services agreement, he's doing it through his own private company?
If you'd like to address it, I'm not good at it.
Yeah, I think it's, we use it on our New Brunswick.
Okay. I do have to ask if the council has any comment on the allegation that on February second, twenty-twenty-one, DPW workers were instructed to pick up medical waste at Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, and improperly dispose of it at the Middlesex County landfill?
I have no knowledge, do I have my councilman's, no, I have no knowledge, though.
And I know that you have some knowledge of the allegations, that on at least two days in July twenty-twenty-two, children were employed riding on the back of garbage trucks, they were paid minimum wage, they were doing this on public roads, they were instructed to throw trash in the back of the truck and operate the compactor, we heard from Mr. Shammy about the compactor and the legality of that, but isn't it true that under the Fair Labor Standards Act, that type of work, being called an outside helper, on a vehicle operating on a public roadway, is not allowed for people under eighteen? Do you have any comment on that allegation?
No, I have any comment this time, but I will, will note your remarks, and perhaps I'll have a comment for next case.
I'll look forward to it. I do want to also thank the New Public Information Officer at New Brunswick Police Department, I've now started to get a lot more information on all the violent crimes that are happening, but I think I shouldn't be the only one getting this information, in many cases, there should be public alerts issued, so I'm just gonna read a few of the matters here. August fourth, Joyce Kilmer in Hale, fifty-seven-year-old man struck with a closed fist, pushed to the ground, robbed of his chain, no arrest, no notification to the public. August sixth, Remson and Sedan, my neighborhood, thirty-nine-year-old man grabbed from behind, robbed, thrown to the ground by two suspects, no arrest, no notification to the public. Also August sixth, also my neighborhood, Sedan and Trooper, maybe it was Remson, I'm not sure, thirty-five-year-old man struck in the leg with an object by an unknown suspect, no arrest, no notification to the public. August seventh, Handy and Joyce Kilmer, thirty-eight-year-old man attacked by two unknown suspects, struck with closed fist, robbed, went to the hospital, no arrest, no notification to the public. August seventh, Sanford and Jersey, suspect tried to take cash and a phone from a twenty-seven-year-old woman, kicked her to the ground, she was hospitalized, no arrest, no notification to the public. August ninth, twenty-two Harvey Street, thirty-six-year-old man struck and robbed by August 9th, 22 Harvey Street, 36-year-old man struck and robbed by an unknown suspect while sitting on Harvey Street. No arrest, no notification to the public. August 10th, Somerset and Easton, two suspects assaulted a 40-year-old victim in a road rage incident. No arrest, no notification to the public, no Rutgers PD alert on that one either. Joyce Kilmer in Patterson, August 11th, two unknown suspects punched a cyclist victim after they cut him off and attempted to strike him with a cutting instrument. No arrest, no notification to the public. August 13th, this is really concerning, 9:45 a.m., shots were fired. Police responded. They found evidence that shots were fired, property damage. No notification to the public. Thankfully, no one was hurt that we know of. But the city had promised that they would release information whenever there was a shooting in a public place. This is a public place in the morning on August 13th. And I don't understand why that shooting was not reported to the public. August 18th, 300 Hamilton Street, 21-year-old woman pushed, struck with a closed fist, robbed by two juvenile suspects. No arrest, no notification to the public. August 19th, 83 Richardson Street, 20-year-old man shoved and punched at a large gathering, knocked unconscious. No arrest, no notification to the public. August 21st, Paul Robeson in Sanford, 31-year-old threatened with handguns by two unknown suspects. And that was also no notification to the public and no arrest. I'll just skip ahead because I only have a limited amount of time here, but there was an armed robbery with cutting instruments at the gas station on Route 1, Exxon. No notification to the public, no arrests. Got to, just so many victims, I don't even have time to mention all this. Can you tell me why isn't the city putting more information out about violent crime?
They have a guideline where they use the nixle. We've been through this.
Well, they never use the nixle for violent crimes. So that's unacceptable. Don't you agree?
You're saying it's unacceptable in your opinion.
I, I, I.
No other comments?
Do you, do you agree?
You know, I don't comment on anything during the public portion. I don't ask a question.
Well, I'll disclose by saying the mayor needs to show up here for himself and speak for himself. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Alex. I'm here to represent my pastor, Udisis Arul. Since 2017, we work with the community of New Brunswick, helping the homeless people, giving food, giving clothes, working undercover, helping the community of New Brunswick, helping the homeless people since 2017. And we're trying to work with you and to see you guys that work what we do, helping the community, cleaning the city of New Brunswick. We are preaching the veteran park, we're here in Korean Veteran Parks. We always preach every Sunday at 2 o'clock afternoon, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, like four hours. So we try to work with you guys, with the leader of the New Brunswick. So that's what I'm here for, to get some support of you guys.
Do you have a business card you can leave with, with the city clerk?
My pastor, Udisis, is right here with me.
If you can leave, if you can leave the information with the city clerk, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you for your service and what you do. Are there any other speakers this evening?
Hi, Brittany Richardson, Livingston Avenue. I don't want to waste most of my five minutes on reminding the public of the overworked, underpaid Department of Public Waste. I'm a driver for the sanitation truck. You don't care about your city. You don't care about your workers, especially not the black ones anyway. But that's neither here nor there. I'm just hoping that in the near future, that when I file these multiple lawsuits that you can't run from, because I have proof of everything, that it gets exposed on a very high level. Because you guys are careless. You don't care, and the workload has not changed. As far as changes, you have done nothing, other than you put an air conditioner in the brick room after we begged. And we are not allowed to sit in there now, so we don't, still don't get to use the air conditioner. But, you know, it's draining to come here to see people actually think that you guys have some sort of heart to help them, because you don't. You really don't, and it's disappointing that I work for a city that could care less about its workers. But Charlie, I do have those videos and pictures of when they sent us out to pick up the medical waste during COVID, even though we're not expected to be, we're not considered essential workers. And they're spending the funding. Oh, you didn't tell the other girl to address the council?
No, no one was speaking to anyone directly.
She was facing, I said, but you just said you're, you're talking to Mr. Cradville. The council.
You're supposed to speak to the council, not Mr. Cradville.
Okay, council. Well, I have those pictures and videos of the day they sent us to pick up the medical waste in the height of COVID. And mostly in the garbage was hazardous COVID tests, probably medical supplies from when people passed away from COVID. And we had at least two truckloads, because I was the one driving that truck. And I was with someone. We didn't, wasn't informed where we were picking up. We didn't have any masks. They didn't clean our trucks out. They, all they did was wash the back of it out, down into the sewer. And they said that OSHA told them they could do that, which they're probably paying OSHA as well, but we don't know that either. But once again, council, I do have lots of other pictures and videos of the illegal things they do on a federal level. Because, you know, they're, they don't believe anything that you said, so I try to have the proof behind it. I was, I've never been your enemy. I've only tried to alert you of the things that were going on to see if you were going to make changes. And you did not, because you, you just don't care. You know, you pick and choose who to care about and what to care about, and that's fine. But, you know, what goes around comes around, and each one of you that are doing things behind the scenes, you will be exposed in due time. I'm not going to miss a meeting, and you're going to see my face. That's not a threat. It's a promise. Because you have to be exposed for the things that you're doing behind the scenes. These are not nice council-elected, like, I don't understand how they see that. I mean, I did at first. I thought, you know, you guys were going to be reasonable and listen, but you don't care. There hasn't been any changes down in my company. We still have the unsafe equipment. We're still trying to figure out why we weren't paid hazard pay. They're saying that they spent it on all this other stuff, but not once did they say, I'm going to pay the workers that were out there on the front line, helping during hurricanes and the state of emergency. Everyone can stay home safe. We don't get to stay home. We have to be out there because the garbage is more important than my life. The garbage was more important than my child's life that the city killed, and they don't care about that. They didn't care. They went against the doctor's orders to make me work, because why? Their excuse was they were short-staffed. I have paperwork to prove that, so I hope Shammy, who's your city lawyer, you are a really good lawyer, because you, you guys want to lose. I'm telling you, you are not making the necessary changes, because you do not have to deal with what's going on. The bargaining system is your excuse. You change the rules every day, which is unfair. You should check into your management, because that's where your problem lies. But are you going to do that? I don't think so. Start with your management. That's where all of this stuff starts. Trust me. May do it, may not, but you're going to get exposed. I'll continue to pray for you.
I normally make this comment before, because this has been an issue in the past couple of months. But this is a collective bargaining issue. The council is not part of those negotiations, and it should be handled through the grievance process, and that's the only comment the council is going to make on it at this time, especially with threatened litigation. And are there any other members, excuse me, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Saying nothing. Oh, of course.
Yeah. Not that we know of. Okay, Zach. Zach. Long time, born in St. Peters, New Brunswick resident, live on Townsend Street, all that stuff. Super simple. I received a citation. I guess I got it recorded for, for trash cans visible from the street. I was told at one point in time we could pay it online, and now I got to show up in person. Is there a reason that we changed it from the, I can pay it online, to go to my life, to the, I got to reschedule things and show up in person?
Is it a court date mandatory?
It's paperwork. I don't know. I'm reading it for the, where can I pay this thing and keep it moving. But I had a call down to the courthouse, maybe five or six times, tied a woman, you know, like it creates more stuff.
I will get information for you. I'll get that. You'll like it more.
Okay, cool. I appreciate it. Yeah.
Is there anyone else who has any comments to make this evening?
Council president, if you don't mind.
Yes, Mr. Gose. No, I don't.
I think the council would want to know just a couple of important details regarding some of the public testimony tonight. Regarding the hospital waste, the hospital separates all of its refuse between medical waste and other areas. Medical waste is handled from point of origin through a whole separate system. So I'm really not sure where these allegations are coming from. But the only, only refuse that, that we would be dealing with would just be regular garbage, non-medical waste.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gose. Are there any other, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Esterbar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.